Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the December 25. It's to the flag. And now we'll take a moment of silence for those who protect us home and abroad. Thank you. If everybody could please mute your cell phones, it would be appreciated this meeting. Participating this evening on Zoom, we have Consular Brooks, Consul Goff, Consul Ariaga, and there's a phone number. Is that Jerry Roy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and Consular Roy. Okay, thank you. Clark, could you call the roll?
President Laflambeau.
Here.
Roy.
Yeah, here.
Ariaga.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Goff.
Here.
Valkir.
Here.
Crumpets.
Here.
Chumsky.
Here.
Kushein.
Here.
Labrie.
Here.
Pinaya Costello.
Here.
Eleven present.
Thank you. This evening, we have the liaison for the school department, Sandra Perez, for being here this evening. Okay, in compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chickaby is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts this meeting. Is there anyone on Zoom or any audience video or out of taping this meeting? Seeing none, we will move into the mayor's orders, briefings, and announcements.
Thank you, President Laflambeau. Mike Pease, Mayor's Chief of Staff, he was unable to be with you tonight, and he appreciate your consideration of the following orders. Mayor's Order 1 is the appropriation of $28,323.22 in the following named account, human resources special account from indemnification of police and fire from the funds available in the stabilization fund. This is, as a self-insure, you know, the city indemnifies our injured police and fire officers who have been injured on duty. This is the list for this meeting. I think we have them every meeting.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Order 2.
Mayor's Order 2 is that the City Council accept the CBI Council on Aging FY26 earmark grant from the Executive Office of Aging and Independence in the amount of $50,000 in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53A. This is the grant that we received annually from the Executive Office of Aging and Independence. This year, we're planning on using the grant for some landscaping work around the building and shed for some of the equipment that we use in the landscaping as well. So we ask that you accept the grant in accordance with the rules.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Order 3.
Mayor's Order 3 is the appropriation of $269,662.04 in the following named account, Law Department Special Account for Out-of-Court Settlements from the Available Funds in the Stabilization Fund. We've been able to reach a settlement in one of our lawsuits against the city, and I believe Consular Albano is here if you have any questions or if you would like a brief explanation of the settlement.
I'd like him to explain a little bit so the consuls know about it. If you come to the mic, please.
Good evening, members of the council. Mark Albano from the Chickaby Law Department. I've worked on this case from its inception. It involves a class action lawsuit brought by persons who attended the police academy while employed by the city of Chickaby, going back three years from the date that the case was filed in April. That's the statute of limitations. There are 28 of those persons, some of whom are officers, some of whom are not. The case is firmly, the claims are firmly rooted in Massachusetts law and a 2023 Appeals Court decision from the town of Brewster. In that case, cadets from the town of Brewster sued under Chapter 41, Section 96, and prevailed upon the court and then the appeals court to establish that persons in the academy must be paid at the rate that sworn officers are paid, even though they're not yet sworn officers. That holding leads to claims under the Massachusetts Wage Act, which is Chapter 149, Sections 148 and 150. In short, that act provides that if an employer is late in paying wages, even for a day, and even though the employer may pay two days late, the employer is nonetheless liable for three times the amount of wages, plus statutory interest at 12% a year from the time that the wages should have been paid, plus attorney's fees. It's a draconian statute in terms of the remedy it provides, and the intent, the Mass Legislature thought was very important for employers to pay employees timely. That's the genesis of the statute, and it's become a popular claim throughout the Commonwealth, given that the remedies are so severe. You may recall, the city on its own, before the lawsuit was started, undertook and paid these 28 people, $113,178.76, which was the single damages, the amount of the differential between what they were being paid and the sworn police officer rate for those 28 people. There were five others that made claims outside of the class action, and we settled those for about $10,000 each. The, we negotiated the settlement. We really didn't have much leverage to negotiate with because it's strict liability. The only things we could negotiate with were really the interest in the attorney's fees. Counsel for the plaintiff, a fellow by the name of Jeff Morneau, is very skilled in these cases. He has a similar case right now against the city of Springfield, which is pending. But he wanted $60,000 in attorney's fees, and we were able to prevail upon him to say, "Look, we'll limit our liability for $10,000 in attorney's fees, and that's all we're going to pay." So if you double the single damages, that takes us to $226,357,357.52. There was interest that we calculated at $27,480.2, the $10,000 in attorney's fees that we agreed to pay. And finally, we agreed to pay the settlement administration costs of $5,824.50. Those costs, they hire a settlement administrator, and that administrator gives notice to all the class members and facilitates the payment. The city will pay this amount once the settlement is approved by the court to the settlement administrator, give a $10.99 to the settlement administrator, and then the settlement administrator takes care of all the individual payments to the plaintiffs and the taxes and all that. So it's a favorable settlement. It sounds harsh, but it's under the law. It's actually reasonable. We were able to limit the attorney's fees. If we went to court and fought this, I'm pretty sure we'd lose, and the attorney's fees would be 10 times what we negotiated. So although it's a, it's a lot of money, it's, we really have no choice but to pay it. Ultimately, once the mayor, if this is approved by the council this evening, which I would highly recommend, the mayor will sign the 38-page settlement agreement. That agreement will go before a superior court judge, and that judge will decide whether it's fair to the plaintiffs and whether there is such a class, and whether it's fair to the city. And assuming that all those things to be true, the court will approve the settlement, and then we'd have 30 days to pay. So the time of payment, really, it's looking like it's going to be at least 90 days and maybe 120 days. But by the time all of these legal hurdles are cleared. So that's the basic nature of the case. We thought about it six ways to Sunday. There's really no way around it. And I think Westfield is fighting a similar case right now. They've hired a C-Force Swain, a large New York City law firm, and last I heard, they went to the council for another $250,000 to pay for their legal fees, and they're not winning the case. I'd be happy to address any questions you might have, and I appreciate your attention.
Well, first, I'd like, I'll let Consul Valkir go first, and then I'll ask.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Consul, for giving us an explanation. I'm just kind of curious. You did make one comment about this law, and you said it was kind of draconian, and so I'm curious if anybody has reached out to our state legislators to potentially take a look at this law and to see if somehow it might be able to be looked at so that potentially down the road, if, say, there's a modification of this law at the State House, maybe it won't come back to hurt us down the road. But I know that our hands are kind of tied, so I thank you for your hard work, but I'm just kind of curious if anybody's reached out to legislation to say, "Hey, maybe we need to look at this law to see if we can get it tweaked or modified."
I certainly have not, but the chatter among the employment lawyer defense bar is that the only remedy around these draconian measures is a legislative one, because the courts have repeatedly rejected any challenge to the law as being unconstitutional or unduly punitive. And in fact, the courts have said, right from the SJC right on down to the lower-level trial courts, it's a remedial statute. It's intended, we know it's harsh. It's intended to help employees. And, and the court has said the remedy lies with the legislature, not with us. We're only applying the law as it's written. So I, perhaps the Mass Municipal Association has sought relief, but more likely the Massachusetts Industrial, the Mass Association of Industries or employers have more at stake to get the law overturned.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll say.
If I may add to that, Consul Valkir, we have renegotiated the police contract and taken that language out of the contracts, and now anyone who's hired will immediately be paid at the officer level.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mike.
Well, I don't have a question, but I want to thank you for coming and explaining because this is something we have to do. We have no choice. It's the law. And we are not the only city that we did wrong here. It's something that's going, many parts of the city, I looked it up, are in the same situation we are. As you mentioned, we've done this already as partial, and this is the findings of the rest of it. So we have no choice. Whether we kick it down the road, it's just going to cost us a lot more money.
Right. To your point, there's no suggestion of any wrongdoing.
Absolutely.
Other, Brewster, Westfield, Springfield, any, most, most cities have taken that approach until it was declared illegal in 2023. And the statute, you don't have to prove fault. It's strict liability.
Yep. Thank you. Consul Labrie.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Going forward, are we going to be paying the officers, you know, what they would have gotten in a suit in the first place? Or are we going to go back to?
We'd have to pay them. The officers in the academy now have to be paid at the rate of sworn officers.
Okay.
And I don't know what the new collective bargaining agreement holds, but I'm sure that would be consistent with the law.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're paying them going forward, though.
Thank you.
Don't have to keep fighting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none? Do you have any other comments?
Thank you for your consideration. The mayor appreciates you moving forward with getting this suit finally settled and getting this behind us. One other order the mayor wanted me to mention was Order 18 on your agenda tonight, which is the Westover Air Reserve Base proposal to have an ex officio member on the planning board. Currently, when we're doing the city planning, as you know, we do include Westover in a lot of our plans, but the mayor wanted to, and Lee Polliott agrees, that it'd be nice to have someone actually on the board as an ex officio member. The Westover Air Reserve Base is a crucial asset to the city and to our defense system, also humanitarian measures and things that they do to help the world, not only our community. They're one of our largest employers, and the impact they have on our area is significant. So giving all those facts, it'd be nice to have them as a formal ex officio, non-voting member on the planning board, and he, he appreciates Consular Costello, Consular Ariaga, Consular Chumsky, and Consular Laflambeau co-sponsoring that and bringing that to your attention.
Thank you. Consular Costello.
Yes, I want to thank Chief of Staff Michael Pease for his explanation in regards to this order, and I want to thank the mayor and the other people that contributed to this order. This is a huge, big deal to have Westover as part of our planning process. They're an asset to our city. They've been here since the 1940s. And again, a big thank you for the individuals that thought of this, and now we're going to look to Westover for their input, and they become more and more incorporated in our city government. Thank you.
And if I may.
Yeah.
President Laflambeau, a few announcements. Just a reminder, the tree lighting ceremony will be this Friday at the hub. Because of the construction in front of City Hall, it's safer to have the tree lighting at the hub. We know the city council is an integral part of this celebration, handing out donuts, popcorn, hot chocolate, and cookies, and I know all these children appreciate everything you do to make their holidays brighter. The Bright Nights at the Council on Aging has a December 10th and 11th, the Bright Nights events. There are still some seats left, so if any seniors want to go and enjoy Bright Nights at the Council on Aging, they can still sign up. It starts at 4:30 both evenings, the 10th and the 11th. The inaugural ceremony and events will be occurring on January 5th. To all those who have been elected, and congratulations on everyone who was elected. The ceremony will be held here in the auditorium, and immediately following the inauguration ceremony at 10:00, there will be a city council reorganization meeting on the second-floor conference room right after the inauguration, so I know many of you will have to go down there immediately to conduct your meeting.
If I can just correct that, Mike, the organization meeting will be at 11:30.
11:30.
Not immediately after. It'll be at 11:30.
Yes, hopefully we'll be done by 11:30. And one final announcement, the Mass DOT will be holding their 25% Design Public Hearing at the Chickaby Public Library on Monday, December 15th at 6:00 p.m. This is the final design meeting before they start construction. So the designs of the bridge and of the Veterans Park, the replacement bridge, and all of the construction will be discussed at this meeting, so it's a fairly important meeting for especially the residents of Mr. Kushein's Ward, Ward 7, to be at that meeting Monday, December 15th, 6:00 p.m. at the Chickaby Public Library. Thank you for your consideration. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. We will now move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. Is there anyone in the audience here for public input? Is there anyone here in the audience for public input? Is there anyone here for Zoom for public input? Is there anyone on Zoom for?
Yes.
Okay.
Sue Nuchik, James Street 362.
See the mic. I'll let you know when your time is up. You're all set to start.
Okay, you give me what, Frank?
I'll let you know when your time is up.
That's fair. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Yes. Last time I was here was, I think it was October 28th, and, and there was what I thought a crisis in Chickaby that was happening. Okay, in regard to, you know, a quarterly tax proposal and how it occurred and everything. And it wasn't only until October 28th that I discussed it, because again, you know, three-minute limitation, it takes a while to keep up to the council. And regarding that, thank goodness, there's Vic Anna. He's very much like his dad, straight shooter, honest to the core and everything, and he, he came in and spoke after me about there'll never be four equal payments. Now, what I don't understand is on September 2nd, when supporters of this four quarterly payments never understood that there would never be four equal tax payments, as they claimed in that meeting. Okay? And there was a real push to put it on the ballot, but there was no explanation on the ballot what four quarterly, you know, a quarter tax bill would be, all about the pros and the negatives. So when I see these pushes and this, let's put it this way, functioning illiteracy and falsehoods and, you know, failures, I really wonder, you know, what are you here for? Is it a special interest? Is it about, you know, the public? And you're vote representing the public, giving them all the information you need and they need to understand something, because guess what came in the mail? The tax bills. And, and I'm really concerned because there's no trust. I have no trust in a single counselor from those meetings. If it weren't for Vic Anna, you know, as a person of authority, that you could have all got to, the assesses, the treasurer, et cetera, et cetera, and had meanings in everything. Because not only is there that, there's, if you have quarterly payments, there will be four tax penalty days. And people's lives, they're, you know, they're, they're not very, very simple. They're situational and ever-changing. You know, with the economy, you know, unemployment, health, et cetera. And right now, isn't the fact that people can, if they get a payment that's due, cut it in half and pay half of it halfway through the six months without any extra penalties? So I'm just wondering, what on earth are you thinking about? There was no public education, no explanation on the ballot. The public won't know until they, you know, get the bill if that ever had gone through, and then they would be screwed. I'm really concerned about soundbites and who does it really represent? The other factor, because it's snowing today, must not forget this, that last storm we had.
I'm sorry, Sue, your time is up.
Okay.
Enjoy your evening.
For 17 hours. Let's not have that happen again, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just so, I just want to clarify something is, that was mentioned, this was put on the ballot, and it came back in favor of quarterly, the amount of people, but we still, the city council is the one who approves it. We are going to have hearings on it and let the people know before we decide to do that process. So just keep that in mind. It's not said and done, and there will be more hearings. So I'm not going to go around the room. I'm just explaining something here, okay? On behalf of the city council. All right. We'll now move into Mayor's Orders. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to close public input?
Motion to close public.
Motion made in second to close public input. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chumsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinaya Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passed. Do we have any communications?
No communication.
How about minutes?
We've got minutes. Four sets.
Consul Chumsky.
Motion that the minutes of November 6, 2025, special meeting of the city council meeting, November 6, city council meeting, November 17, special city council meeting, and November 18, can't read today, city council meeting be approved this evening.
Motion made in second, 11:06, 25 special meeting, 11:06, 25 city council meeting, 11:17, 25 special city council meeting, and 11:18, 25 city council meeting be approved this evening. On the motion.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chumsky. Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinaya Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes. Mayor's orders.
Order that the sum of $28,323.22 being hereby appropriate to the following named account, human resource special account for indemnifications of police and fire. Cent amounts to be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Consular Brooks.
Make a motion that Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of mayor. On the motion, please. On the motion, please.
On the motion, because the city is self-insured, these are health-related costs for our police and fire.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Out of chair.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Ten yes, one out of chair.
And a motion passes.
Or that the City Council accept the Chigbee Council on Aging FY26 earmark grant from the Executive Office of Aging and Independence in the amount of $50,000 in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Goff.
Motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is a grant should cover operating expenses at the Council of Aging.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Out of chair.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Ten yes, one out of chair.
And a motion passes.
Or that the sum of $269,662.04 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, Law Department Special Account for out-of-court settlements. Centimeters be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Counsel Kuchain.
Motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion.
This is a class action law brought by some police recruits. Some of them are employed with us, some are not. Back in the day, and it's a common practice even in my day when I was in there, that recruits were always paid less than a sworn officer for what sounds like obvious reasons to most people. But that was a, it goes against the labor laws, and it was reestablished in 2023 with a Supreme Court decision. So they had the rights to go back for three years worth of back pay at triple damages. Our city attorneys did a phenomenal job of negotiating some of those fees down with the attorneys and whatnot. So this is the best case scenario that we could have. This is a, there's nothing we can win this in court because it's pretty strict law. So I would suggest that we pass this tonight. As it's, you know, the city's on its due diligence and we have nowhere to go with this but to settle.
Thank you. Any other questions from the floor? Any comments? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passed.
Have a favorable report from the Human Resource Committee of the appointment of Tasha Schley as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Counsel Labrie.
Yes, motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages.
This is the report.
Okay.
Source Committee report.
Your Human Resources.
Right.
Number four.
The number four, so I want to make a motion that.
May the report be received and passed.
Motion made in second, the favorable Human Resource received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, these people I've interviewed, we interviewed four, three. One couldn't make it, but they were very well-qualified and I recommend them tonight.
Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none? Roll call.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Have a favorable report from the Human Resource Committee on the appointment of John Moran to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Counsel Labrie.
Motion that the Mayor's Order be received and passed through all stages and the appointment be approved this evening.
Motion made in second, the favorable Human Resources Committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, very well-qualified and very happy to have them serve.
Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
And a motion passes.
Have a Human Resource Committee report. Will the motion be placed on file on the appointment of Tracy Dupont as a member of the Veterans Advisory Board?
Counsel Labrie.
Motion to accept the report and the appointment of Tracy Dupont be placed on file as she was not able to attend that meeting.
Motion made in second, the Human Resource Committee report be received and the applicant be placed on file. On the motion.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Please call the roll.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff. Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion passes.
Favorable report from the Human Resource Committee on the appointment of Teresa Picard as a member of the Veterans Advisory Board.
Counsel Labrie.
Motion that the report be received and the appointment of Teresa Picard be approved this evening.
Motion made in second, favorable Human Resource Committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
She's very happy to serve and she's very well-qualified.
Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call, please.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Have a favorable report from the Zoning Committee for special permit application under Chapter 275-50C for the purpose of an oversized accessory sign and a second ground sign located at 357 Burnett Road, Zero Burnett Road with waivers.
Counsel Belkier.
Motion to receive a new special permit application and approve the application for the purpose of erecting an oversized accessory use sign and second ground sign located at 357 Burnett Road and Zero Burnett Road.
Motion made in second, the favorable zoning committee report be approved this evening. On the motion.
Okay, on the motion, Mr. President, this involves three votes. First, we'll do the special permit. This is a special permit application.
Someone on Zoom, just be care, if you can, a minute. Excuse me. Excuse me, Mr. Roy, could you shut your mic off? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll start again. This is, we have a special permit which we'll vote on first, and then we have two waivers. So the special permit application is for the purpose of erecting an oversized accessory use sign and a second ground sign located at 357 Burnett Road and Zero Burnett Road. This is a permit to run with the applicant. And this is also known as the Pilot Travel Center. So our committee voted in favor of that. So I'm recommending that the special permit application be approved this evening.
Thank you. Counsel Schumsky.
Thank you. I just wanted to address for residents that at the meeting I did ask about, is this sign, since it's going to be 16 feet over our usual limit, if it's going to impede on any sorts of residents' well-being? And I was told that it's going to be behind the big mountain of trash where the dump was, so it shouldn't impact the neighborhood. And when I did GPS, I did see that it was about a half-mile away from a residential house, or it was between like a quarter-mile and a half-mile to be exact. But I don't, they told me that it would not infect anyone's line of sight or visibility. Those were the big concerns that I had with the potential increase of traffic that is going to happen in that area. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Okay, we're going to vote on the special permit. Roll call.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes for the special permit. Waiver one.
Waiver one, Mr. President, that is a request for a goalpost sign by.
Need a motion first.
Oh, a motion that the, a motion to receive the waiver request regarding the Pilot Travel Center for the goalpost sign.
Motion made in second, waiver one be approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, Mr. President, this is a waiver request for a goalpost sign by right design. It's requested for 16 square feet over permitted 60 square feet industrial zoning. And this is also at the Pilot Travel Center. And this was discussed at our zoning committee meeting. And we're, the committees in favor of this approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call for waiver one.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy. Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes for waiver one.
Waiver two.
Waiver two.
Waiver number two, this is a, this is a motion to approve the waiver number two regarding the mid-rise sign at the Pilot Travel Center.
Motion made in second, waiver two be approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, this is a second waiver for approval of a mid-rise sign for full relief at the Pilot Travel Center. And again, we discussed this at our zoning committee meeting, and we had a couple of questions, but the committee felt that we should pass this waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call for waiver two approval.
President Laflam.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Belkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Okay. Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Okay. We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under chapter two seventy-five dash fifty-eight C seven for the purpose of operating a towed, a towing and storage business located at seventy-eight West Street Cruise Control Transportation.
Contrabala, Alkier.
A motion to receive the new special permit application and follow it up with the motion to postpone to continue, uh, this, uh, this motion.
Motion made in second, the favorable zoning committee report be received and postponed. On the motion, please.
Uh, on the motion, um, this, we, we had, um, some discussion about this as well. So the motion, um, is to, um, postpone and to continue, uh, this, this applicant's, uh, request to the January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-six zoning committee meeting at six-thirty PM, third floor City Hall auditorium. Uh, this was, uh, we've had some legal discussion on this. This has been going on between our, our counsel, our, our law counsel with the city and also with the applicant, and they had filed, um, what's known as a joint status report by the applicant. And so basically, the attorney for the applicant didn't want, on it, did not want to discuss the application because, uh, there was not a full complement of city counselors at this point. We only have eleven and, uh, not thirteen like for the new term in January. So, um, going back and forth between the lawyers, uh, they felt that this was the best course of action to postpone this continuance until the January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-six meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Councilor Brooks.
Mr. President, I just have a question. I, I'm in receipt of a correspondence from the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding this, uh, business, and they have an appeal hearing on December tenth. Does that, the, the action we've taken out, does that make that December tenth hearing mute? Or is it, is it something that we should still, because it revolves around, um, the pit, the legal opinion as to why we would continue this to the January meeting in twenty-twenty-six. So I guess I'm just looking for clarification. Does this become a moot point, uh, that they have a, a notice of a public hearing regarding a cease and desist letter they received, um, previous to us referring this out to January's, uh, meeting where we'd have a full complement of, uh, our committee?
Councilor Brooks, our attorney will address it.
So, the, um, they're two separate issues. The zoning board of appeals issue and then the special permit are two separate issues. So they wouldn't, action tonight won't make the first moot. However, um, I'm told that the building department's going to withdraw that cease and desist so that, that hearing won't, won't be necessary.
Okay, I just received the letter last week, at the end of last week, I think on Friday or Saturday. Um, so maybe they just haven't, that hasn't been communicated to them yet. Uh, but this came over the weekend.
My, my understanding is, Counselor, that it will be, you're right, it hasn't been withdrawn, but it will be. That's what I've been told.
Okay. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Abstain.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Abstain.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Five, six, seven, eight, yes. One no, two abstem, two abstentions.
Motion passes.
We have a favorable report with a motion to place on file from the ordinance committee be it ordered that the ordinance committee meet to this, to define what overgrowth is in chapter two forty-three dash thirty-eight overgrowth on land.
Councilor Crampits.
Motion that the favorable, uh, ordinance committee report be received and placed on file tonight.
Motion made in second, the ordinance committee report be received and placed on file. On the motion.
Uh, yeah, this was, uh, really, uh, more of a continuation of an informational, uh, meeting to discuss, uh, overgrowth. Uh, it was an order that Counselor Kushein had filed, um, and, and essentially from the discussion, the Health Department uses, um, uh, the state CMR four-one-zero dot five-seventy, uh, maintenance of areas and areas of sanitary and safety condition. Um, so it was discussed about possibly the city adopting, uh, this, and then some other questions were raised about, uh, including leaves in there and then growth into roadways. Uh, you know, it was also a concern. Um, the way this was written, it was not in the form of an ordinance, so it was, um, recommended that, uh, with the new council coming on board in January, that, uh, you know, this could be, uh, refiled, uh, with some more discussion, uh, in, in the form of an ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Kushein.
Yeah, it was a great discussion. So Lisa and I will be working on an ordinance. Uh, I pulled up many communities ordinances and looking at what they had, and there was a lot of things in common. Uh, Webster has a really good written one right now, so we're looking to take that one and tweak it to the city. Um, so we'll have something for next year, but we'll work on that. It won't be too hard.
Councilor Ariaga.
Um, I want to thank my colleague for bringing this up. Um, it definitely started a good conversation. Um, there's a lot of questions around it. I was the one that brought up these two, because I have constituents, uh, reach out about neighbors not cleaning up their yard, so I definitely am looking forward to continuing this conversation. I think it's very important, you know, good neighbors and all that, too. So I want to say thank you again for bringing this forward.
Counselor Costello.
Yes, I want to thank Counselor Kushein for bringing up the overgrowth issue. Um, one thing, when I was at that meeting, I'm not on the committee, but I learned that we're doing the state law and that maybe we should do more on the local level, and I appreciate Counselor Kushein beginning the, the discussion on this. That's one major problem. I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I have a lot of issues in regards to people that are not keeping up their properties. And there's overgrowth, there's issues of, uh, rodents and, uh, property values in the neighborhoods, so I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, this conversation continues and we even tighten up those ordinances in regards to overgrowth and, and maybe even look at the fines and maybe increasing the fines. Because they shouldn't be, people shouldn't be neglecting their property, it affects the entire neighborhood. Thank you again, Counselor Kushein.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the ordinance committee be it ordained by the City Council that the code of the city of Chigbee for the year nineteen ninety-one is amended, being hereby further amended as follows. Add to chapter two sixty dash thirty-seven point one, engine breaks prohibited at James Street from the intersection of Prospect Street heading west to Cyric Street line.
Counselor Crampits.
Motion that the favorable ordinance committee report be received, take its second and final reading and be enrolled, ordained.
Motion made in second, the ordinance committee report, take its second and final reading, be enrolled and ordained. On the motion, please.
Uh, this was filed by, uh, Counselor Piniac Costello, and, uh, there weren't any issues from engineering.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Counselor Chomsky.
I'm just going to say thank you to my fellow counselor for doing this. I know this is an issue that her and I both share this street, and I think it's going to be a great benefit to the people who live there and go down that street every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Favorable report with a motion to place on file from the ordinance committee be it ordered that the engineering department evaluate the no parking here at a corner signs at the intersection of Sanford Street and Hamden Street to consider extending it to a distance of forty feet from the current location on both sides of Sanford Street.
Counselor Crampits.
Motion that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and placed on file.
Motion made in second, that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and placed on file. On the motion, please.
Uh, yes, we had a, a discussion about this, uh, with engineering that, um, you know, there needed to be ordinance filed to strike, uh, the existing, uh, ordinances and then, uh, to add, uh, new ordinances, and then also this wasn't, it was more of a investigation of whether, uh, it could be done, so it wasn't in the form of an ordinance. So again, it was, uh, recommended that, uh, you know, after the first of, when the new council is sworn in, uh, that, um, ordinances to add and to strike be filed for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any com, oh, Councilor Brooks.
Yeah, this was a constituent request. Uh, President Laflamme and I, uh, received phone calls, uh, from a fairly narrow street. There currently is, uh, signs on both sides, although there couldn't be an ordinance located for the left-hand side of the street. Both signs are placed at roughly twenty-five feet from the corner. The residents of the street would like to extend it to forty feet. They think this will help mitigate, uh, some of the problems with navigating their way from Sanford to, uh, Hamden Street to get out safely. So hopefully, we can take this up after the first of the year and provide some relief to the residents.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Favorable report from the ordinance committee with a motion to place on file to strike from the following in schedule, Beverly Street, parking prohibited here at a corner.
Counselor Crampits.
Uh, motion that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and placed on file.
Motion made in second, the ordinance committee report be received and placed on file. On the motion, please.
Uh, yeah, there was, uh, similar to, uh, the previous ones, there was some, uh, discussion on this, and because of the way the current ordinance was, um, it would require it being stricken and then the separate ordinances being filed, uh, to, uh, separate the sides of the street. Uh, so again, it was recommended that these be done, uh, after the, uh, the new council is sworn in next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the ordinance committee with a motion to postpone to add to the following in schedule, one-way street, Turtle Lot Avenue.
Counselor Crampits.
Um, motion that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and postponed to the call of the chair.
Motion made in second, the ordinance committee favorable report be received, postponed to the call of the chair. On the motion, please.
Uh, yeah, this and the, uh, the next two, uh, ordinance requests, uh, relate to a, uh, a traffic issue that Counselor Kushein, uh, has been having in the area of, I think it's Roger's Ice Cream, but I don't want to say if it isn't, but, um, uh, that, uh, there was discussions with, uh, police and fire about, uh, trying this out, and one of the things that, uh, came up was, uh, that, uh, we have recommended, uh, after some previous issues with one-way, uh, streets, uh, that, uh, there'd be buy-in from the residents on the streets that are affected, uh, and, uh, Counselor Kushein, you know, said he would, uh, you know, collect those signatures, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the ordinance committee with a motion to postpone to add to the following in schedule, one-way street, Turtelot Avenue.
Counselor Crampits.
Um, motion that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and postponed to the call of the chair.
Motion made in second, that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and postponed to the call of the chair. On the motion.
Uh, again, this is related to the, the first, the previous order and the next order, and, uh, this is to get signatures to see if there's buy-in from the, uh, residents on the street about turning it into one-way.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Favorable report from the ordinance committee with a motion to postpone to add to the following in schedule, one-way street, Lucretia, Lucretia Avenue.
Counselor Crampits.
Motion that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and postponed to the call of the chair.
Motion made in second, the favorable ordinance committee report be received and postponed to the call of the chair. On the motion, please.
Same as the previous, you know, again, trying to wait for buy-in from the neighbors.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordained by the City Council that the code of the city of Chigbee for the year nineteen ninety-one is amended, being hereby further amended as follows, delete chapter sixteen, commissions, committees, councils, and authorities, claims, and accounts committee. Chapter one, chapter sixteen dash ninety-six, membership, powers, and duties.
Counselor Crampits.
Motion that the proposed ordinance, uh, be sent to the ordinance committee for a public he, here, uh, take its first reading and be, uh, be held at the ordinance committee meeting.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
Uh, yes, this is, uh, an issue that, uh, Counselor Laflamme had, uh, kind of started working with the Law Department on about, um, you know, merging this really into, or these responsibilities into the Law Department, because the Law Department, uh, currently deals with other forms of litigation, so it was felt, um, you know, to have a discussion about this in, in committee to, to see if this is something worth pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordained by the City Council that the code of the city of Chigbee for the year nineteen ninety-one is amended, being hereby further amended as follows, chapter seventy-five, article one, section seventy-five dash two, advisory members be deleted and in certain place thereof advisory members. City clerk, the city engineer, or the person performing the functions of the city engineer and representative of Westover Air Reserve Base as designated by the base commander and the building inspector shall ex officio be advisory members of the planning board.
Counselor Crampits.
Uh, motion that the proposed ordinance take its first reading and be sent to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Motion that order be received, take its first reading, and refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, being sent, uh, to ordinance because, uh, Westover Air Force Base, uh, borders, um, uh, quite a few of the wards in the city, uh, and also has a very big impact on the city itself and also the, the surrounding area. So it was, uh, felt that having, uh, a, uh, basically a, uh, ex officio, uh, member, a, basically an advisor, uh, to the, uh, planning board, um, or on the planning board, uh, would be helpful in, uh, you know, dealing with some of the, the upcoming projects that, uh, would be directly affected by Westover Air Force Base or the effect it would have on those projects. Thank you.
Counselor Costello.
Yes, uh, as I said earlier, this is a great idea. Uh, Westover is vital to the economic development of the city. Um, I want to thank the people that have thought about this ordinance and including Westover in regards to our planning and development. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chomsky.
Thank you. I also would like to thank everyone for this ordinance, potential ordinance. The other thing, too, is I want to bring to everyone on this board's attention and the public. I spent some time on the planning board, I think I was on for three and a half, four years, and there were a number of instances where Westover did come to these meetings or we did have communications back and forth with them regarding certain developments because of certain zoning restrictions, the APZ zone, which prohibits any development in that area because of the flight path, and a number of other scenarios. I think it's going to be a very valuable asset to the planning board. I'm actually kind of shocked it took this long, but I was happy it was brought to our attention at this point in time. I commend the mayor and his staff, um, the planning board, Lee Bouliat, and, um, my other colleagues in the council who's co-sponsoring this with us, and, uh, to President Laflamme for bringing this to our attention as well. So I really think this is a great opportunity for not only the city, but also Westover, which is one of our biggest partners and also is one of the reasons we are able to have all these meetings by keeping us safe. So I look forward to this becoming an official ordinance and the future of which this may hold. Thank you.
Counsel Ariaga.
I agree with my colleague. This is a long time coming. I'm excited to collaborate with the airbase. I think they're a vital part of the city. In times that I've had to collaborate with them, they're great in their information and they do like to support and help. So I really look forward to this coming, to fruition for us.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just want to make one quick comment. I want to actually thank Mike Pease, who did the homework on this and looked into it for us and brought it forward, something that was critical, he thought was important. And I think it was well thought out and it's the right thing to do. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the DPW complete the dashed line on Grattan Street to Meadow Street, second request.
Counsel Kushein.
Motion that the order be received and sent to the DPW for implementation.
Motion made to second that the order be received and sent to the DPW. On the motion, please.
Originally, it was filed on August 6, 2024.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme, Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the DPW paint the curbing around the pedestrian refuges on Chicagoo Street with high-vis yellow paint.
Counsel Kushein.
Motion that the order be received and sent to the DPW for implementation.
Motion made to second the order be received and sent to the DPW for installation. On the motion, please.
This was originally filed on March 18 of 2025.
Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom?
You could ask if he'll amend this, his order.
Is it? Can I ask him to amend this order?
Need permission to speak.
Oh, I need permission to speak first. Motion to allow the president to speak.
Motion let the president speak.
Allow the president to speak.
Roll call.
President Laflamme, Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Counsel Goff.
Sorry. Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Ten yes, one abstention.
Thank you. I'm glad you, this was brought forward, but I would like to see if we can add something to this. And what I'd like to see added is reflectors, because when the snow and everything's there, the yellow paint is not going to be seen. So it was brought to my attention, maybe the two-foot reflectors that will identify when the cars go by, because I got many calls on people hitting it too, the islands in the middle. But once the snow or even that low sometimes, people just still won't see them. So I just want to see if we can look into that.
So you're looking for delineators?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need a motion to amend this order to say with reflectors or?
Motion to amend the order to add delineators to the order.
Do I have to second that?
Yeah.
Motion made to second to allow the order to add delineate.
Delineators.
Delineators to the order. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call when you're done.
Okay, to amend the order, President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks. Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
And now a motion on the amended order.
Motion to approve and send to the DPW for implementation.
Motion made to second to approve the amended order. On the motion.
Wait, y'all set with that? You have a question?
Okay, just, okay. Any questions on it? Any? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky, Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Okay. Twenty-one. Have an application for an alteration of a Class II auto repair auto detail license, changing the number of vehicles from 24 to 32, Allstate Auto Max, 400 East Main Street.
Counselor Brooks.
Make a motion that the application for an alteration of Class II auto repair auto detail license be received and referred to the license subcommittee for a public hearing.
Motion made to second the application for a Class II altercation be received and sent to the license committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
We'll take it up in committee.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Twenty-two and twenty-three, or 2026, Class 1 License Renewals, Bob Pion Buick GMC, Springfield Automotive Partners, doing business as Mercedes-Benz of Springfield.
Counselor Brooks.
Make a motion that 2026 Class 1 License Renewals be received and approved this evening with restrictions.
Motion made to second that 2026 Class 1 License Renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there are any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? Any concerns from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Twenty-four through 27, or 2026, Class 2 License Renewals, A&amp;M Auto Sales and Repair LLC, International Autobody, Inc., Johorey Autobody, Penske Truck Leasing, Inc.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2026 Class 2 License Renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made to second that 2026 Class 2 License Renewals be received and approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? Any concerns from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Twenty-six Autobody License Renewals, Chuck's Autobody, Inc., Johorey Autobody.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that 2026 Auto License Renewals be received and Autobody License Renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made to second 2026 Autobody License Renewals be received and approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any comments, any concerns from the floor? Any concerns from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Alkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Thirty through 35, or 2026 Auto Repair License Renewals, ABM Transmission and Engine Technology, A&amp;M Auto Sales and Repair LLC, Bob Pion Buick GMC, Springfield Automotive Partners, doing business as Mercedes-Benz of Springfield, Springfield, sorry, Sullivan Tire Commercial Truck Repair and Tony's Auto Repair.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2026 Auto Repair License Renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made to second that 2026 Auto Repair License Renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
On the motion unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? Any concerns from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.